Welcome everybody to our March 1st school board meeting. You have agenda of board members in front of you and I didn't take motion. If we have any changes or releases or additions or whatever, we can make those changes. It's not all we're taking the motion. We approve our agenda. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All of the favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, next on agenda, I have a pledge of allegiance for everybody. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item we have the board minutes from our February 1st meeting. There is a committee for your review. Let us know if you have any changes or releases or anything. If not, chair will take motion whenever you're ready. Have a motion for the president for the next meeting? Have a say, all of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you. Next, we have dispersals that we sent out to you all. Let us know if you have any questions? Sandy, no?
Sandy, yes, Mr. Clark is not getting the dispersals?
I think it may be only going to my school or whatever.
Um, I think it was sent to personal, but him.
I got, I got the, all the other attachments, but I don't have the dispersal.
You got the little plus two right beside?
I've got.
I just sent it to you.
Thank you.
I haven't got what's in the plus two.
Oh, Coach, you had it.
No, it shows like heat attachment. But I got enough.
Just have curiosity, what would we have paid Murray County Board of Education for? Seventy-five dollars, it's not much, just to wonder.
What would we pay them what?
Murray County Board of Education. It's just same size.
I was looking for, I was trying to find my cheat sheet, Sandy, where is that?
It's not that much money.
I think it's Mr. Jones' bus driver test.
My test.
He can't get it, that's what it was.
You, you got your bus driver?
I did.
He is an official bus driver. You're, you're looking at he's a different man.
Taking one for the tank.
Looking for the utility.
I'm just, it's usually about thirty-one thousand. Thirty-one thousand, yeah.
Eight hundred ninety-eight.
Oh, it's too hard to discuss it earlier.
Yeah, it was cold.
All over the way.
It's cold.
Brings some efficiency, good efficiency.
It's usually in the twenties. It's cold.
Cold here. Anyway, they were.
Alright, we got motion for, for, for the first.
Second.
You have a say. If I have any other questions? All of the favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, thank you. Alright, we'll move on to principal's reports. Is Dr. Styles here or somebody?
Uh, Dr. Carter is.
Dr. Carter?
Dr. Carter.
Hi, Dr. Carter.
Oh, hi. The podium?
How you doing?
I'm good, how are you? The infamous podium, right? Um, Dr. Styles, as you guys know, loves visuals, so, um, and I'm not sure how she normally shows you guys what's going on, but we, um, we honor our students. Can I put that one down here? Honor roll, you wanna, you wanna be my vanna? You'll be my vanna? Um, so, we honor our students with, yeah, those two first. With lunch. With lunch from Ms. Flo's, so it's, they get to eat lunch with our principals. I know, isn't that awesome? So those are our honor students, an honor roll. Um, we did celebrate Ms. Wilkerson, she's our teacher of the year, and I'm not sure if Dr. Styles told you guys about that. This week is, well, not these yet.
I'm sorry.
Um, yes, well, go ahead with this. We have, um, we've started something on Tuesday mornings. We're pushing in with a fabulous crew, some of our related arts teachers and others in the morning before our related arts rotation gets started. We're pushing into kindergarten and working on letter, letter sounds, letter naming, things of that nature, and getting to know our, our young kids and really helping those teachers provide support to them. So, this is some of those times, um, it's fun, we try to make it game-like, fun for the kids, and a time for the, even the PE teacher to interact academically more so than just physical. So we've been doing those kinds of things. Um, this was a fun activity, this, this particular group was experimenting with collaboration and doing experiment, but they were trying to pick up the ping pong ball without touching it. And they had napkins, so they had to work together, collaborate, and, um, figure out how to do that without touching the ping pong ball. Personally, I had to spend a minute. Kinda wanted to throw my ping pong ball, if you know what I mean. And then, um, also another fourth grade team worked with Super Bowl to make learning fun, but they did a lot of Super Bowl activities around the Super Bowl. And you know how kids get involved in all that, they wanna watch the Super Bowl. Um, it's a great educational learning opportunity to, to embed some of that stuff into the classroom. This week is Read Across America, as you guys know, Dr. Seuss's birthday, and we've got lots of activities around that this week. We had Hat Day today. Ms. Pittinger, of course, does this every year, she's fabulous, she gets the kids involved. We love it, we have, and a lot of you have been in our building, some of you are newer, but, um, a lot of you have been in our building before being guest readers, and of course, we're not doing guests right now, so, we're trying to find time for, um, different people to go in classrooms and read to students, so that they can see us in a different light, as opposed to just someone in the office or someone that greets them in the morning, someone that wants to be in classes and, and read books. So, um, even the cafeteria staff, we've tried to get them involved, you know, they see their cute faces in lunch line, but, you know, Ms. Peggy can go read you a book. So, we're doing that kind of thing, we have All the Places You'll Go, it's tomorrow, so they'll dress up, as what they want to be when they grow up. And then on Wednesday, it's Wacky Wednesday, that's always a great day to dress backwards. It's my favorite day, you never know what they're gonna come in mismatched. Of course, that's great, cause you don't have to match the socks that week. And then on Thursday, it's Thing One and Thing Two, and we ask that they dress up with a friend as a twin. They don't have to have the Thing One, Thing Two outfits, but you know, you know, wear a plaid shirt with your blue jeans and, and look the same. And then on Friday, um, it's Cozy Up with a Book Day, and you're gonna wear their pajamas and their pajama shoes and cozy it with a book, and they'll have some time during the day to do that. So if you see us in car rider line and we have weird hair and some crazy hats, all that kind of wonderful stuff is coming this week with Read Across America. One of the things that Dr. Styles also did recently with our staff and teachers is the fundraiser, where we have businesses buy in and we have signs coming. So we should have signs that are gonna be up and around the building, and I know a lot of y'all drive through. So, that's coming, I think March the 22nd is when we're supposed to have those signs up and around our building. So, and it's local businesses that, um, are promoting us and, and things of that nature. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be nice, and I've seen some of those, she brought some of those in this morning, they were really nice. So, just hope that if a tornado comes, we can grab those things, go inside with them. So you kinda have to watch for wind and things of that nature, but I think it's gonna be a good thing. And of course, local businesses buying into Ralph Askins and Fayetteville City Schools. I think that's all that I have, um, anybody have any questions?
Good job.
Awesome, thank you. Kona ice too, next week, this week, when, or, is it next week? So we'll have Kona ice and the kids are excited about that. They love that. I'm not sure if, um, we need all that sugar when we don't get to go outside and play afterwards, but.
That should only be done on Fridays or after two.
I know. Um, last week was really hard, of course, you guys know, with the weather, the weather changed so dramatically from the week before. And I caught teachers, I'm like, oh, that's an extra ten minutes, I'll see you out there. So we, looking forward to the weather change. Thank you, I enjoyed it, y'all have a good night.
Alright, Ms. Jean? Hi, Ms. Jean.
How are y'all?
How you doing?
I'm great. Wanted to let you guys know a few things going on in middle school. Our boys soccer season is underway, they've had a couple of games. We were to begin the season for baseball and softball tonight, but of course, that got postponed, so, um, but they're anxious to get started, so, because of the rain, we had a home game for baseball and away game for softball. So that's been postponed or canceled. Last week, um, our FMS had their virtual second Beta Club competition. We had the first year ever that our fifth graders got to compete. So we had twelve fifth graders that got to compete and about twenty-seventh and eighth graders, it was really neat watching them. We did that on our, um, Remote Wednesday, so they could scatter throughout the building and compete in that. We'll know those results at the end of March. Uh, our district is actually up for the National District of Distinction Award, and then our school, Fayetteville Middle School, is up for the National Merit Award. And all this is due to Wendy Butler and her hard work and all the efforts she puts in with those Beta Club members. She does a phenomenal job with that. Um, we actually had four virtual students return today for traditional learning. We've had several others, some of them, kids have emailed me and they are interested in coming back after spring break, so I'll look to see a few more, uh, coming back into the building. We're trying to make that transition smooth for them, as well as for the teachers. We encourage them to come back on a Monday, um, so the teachers can prepare seating charts and welcome them in. Uh, the four that I saw today looked very excited to be back, back in the building. Um, we will be giving our benchmark assessment next week, and we've reached out to all of our virtual students, and we're asking them to come in to take that testing with us. It'll be the first thing in the morning from like eight to nine-thirty. Uh, the tests will, you know, provide our teachers with important data to drive their instruction for the remainder of the school year. And we felt it was very important to get those virtual students in. Um, if they're not comfortable, we're letting them stay in the cafeteria and spread out, so we've got plenty of room. Um, and we're also kinda hoping once we get them in the building, maybe it'll encourage some of them to, to come back and, and join us for our traditional learning. And last, we have scheduled our eighth grade night for May eighth at six o'clock. Um, we've let the parents know, we've let the kids know, we will, uh, have a dinner that night, but we are, at this time, we have all COVID, COVID protocols in place to keep everybody as, as safe as possible, so.
And there's been some concern, you know, because we've had basketball games, but we want you to know that at this point in time, that's what they are. We still could change those, but we felt it was prudent to be tight early and then easily loosen up, rather than to say, oh, we're going to have it wide open at the last second, have to tighten back up. So, we're, Ms. Jean and I actually spoke today, as possible as we could open that up and it be just as normal as it's always been. And we hope that is the case, but right now, we wanna be very cautious.
And our big thing was just, it, it's for the kids, and they were, you know, as we went from class to class to, to tell them, and if some of you do not know, a lot of y'all are, you know, your parents who had kids, you know what a big deal is, this is to our kids. You know, they, they wear formal dresses, the boys dress up, and they don't have to wear tux, but it's shirt and tie. They get announced, you know, um, what their future plans are, you know, what they liked about school, it's a big deal. It's also when we announce our Mr. and Ms. FMS nominees and, and the winners. Um, we announce our superlatives, and they were just all so excited just to be able to have this night for them. Um, so that's, you know, we wanna be careful, but we also wanna give them their special time, because it's their, you know, going out and, and moving on to high school night for them, so. But yeah, we will, we've got a lot of, uh, plans in the works, but we wanted to be as careful as we can at this point, just so we could make sure that they have that special night for them. Alright, any questions or anything? Alright, you're welcome.
Is there a public out there?
No, there's no one from the high school tonight. I don't think there is that would, there. Here's the basketball game, so they are traveling tonight, and they asked me and I excused them and said, absolutely. The same thing would get to Mr. Giffen, obviously his daughter's playing, so that's where he's gonna be now.
I just wanted to mention, give them props, just because they deserve it, but, and Eric can probably say, there was a, like, there was buses and there was kids going everywhere, and they traveled to Nashville to play Merrill Hight, the girls did Saturday night. And Adam and Coach Key stepped up and drove the vans in conjunction with Holly to get the girls where they were going, after they'd already been at games four times.
Five weeks.
That week, so, I just thought that was cool and critical.
Yeah.
Anyway, we just said that was really awesome to have administrators that are that supportive, that are gonna step into that role, like, on a Saturday night and drive to Nashville when they need to be.
That is a great job.
I just thought it was neat.
I agree.
Alright, we'll move on to supervisor, August Jones, you're up.
I would like to echo Jennifer's statement about the administration stepping up for that. Uh, I'll start with my transportation report, uh, which segues nicely. Um, we're currently down with Eddie and Vicky are both out. Eddie, we anticipate he should be able to come back and rejoin us, um, after the break. And then Vicky's gonna be out a minimum of four weeks, she has a cast on her leg. She'd had an injury to her foot and ankle, um, that has worsened, they've had to put in a cast, and obviously you can't use, you can't drive a bus with a cast on your leg. So, uh, we are still down quite a few people. Um, as we mentioned earlier, I've, I've passed my test, so I'll be driving some routes from time to time, trying to fill in, but we are greatly appreciative of all the administration with their understanding of our situation. Uh, we covered a vast number of away games between the middle school and the high school last week, and I'm very pleased with the drivers, that Coach Bobby, I think, drove four different trips. Um, so he's working from an early route all the way through the day at the building, and then sometimes till nine and ten at night, four times during the week. So there's a lot of good things going on with that, um, but we do anticipate, uh, those situations improving. From facility standpoint, Mr. Clark wanted to thank you for going with us to Tupelo. I hope you found that as exciting and, um, enlightening as we did. Uh, the interest of the board was something that was really nice to, to see and to appreciate while we were on the trip. Um, I wanted to update everybody on our metal, multipurpose sports facility. We are, I spoke to Coach Jay a couple of weeks ago, and the coaches has, have been in talks to decide exactly, you know, what they want as we're moving, and the target has, has moved a few times, but right now, uh, the discussion has been that they want to go with a pavilion style, about an eighty by one hundred with open walls. Uh, the thought is that should help us to some extent with codes. Um, I have spoken to a couple of companies that have built these types of structures, and I'm getting details, uh, from one up around Nashville, that has absorbed a company in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, that made one down in Danville, at Morgan County, and it's an outstanding structure. So I'm getting the information on how to create, uh, requests for bids and things like that. I'm thinking that we'll be able, you know, at this rate, if it continues, I've got some good information. I'm thinking within the next couple of months, we'll be able to put that out and advertise potentially, assuming nothing changes between here and there, so there's progress on that. Um, I've adapted two drafts of an RFQ document that can be sent to TEMA for their approval. Um, the two drafts, I have a couple of questions on. Coach Keys has emailed Carrie at TEMA, uh, we wanna know verbatim what their language needs to look like for some of the specific statements they need to have for government regulatory, uh, situations. Also, we're trying to determine at this point if the documentation is appropriate for us to use Fayetteville City Schools as owner in the documentation, or if it needs to be the city of Fayetteville. At some point, uh, the, the city of Fayetteville obviously will own the structure, but, um, I believe Mayor Wes and Ant will sign a document that allows us to do all of the administrative work during the construction and the management of the grant. So we're waiting on those, I can send those out the next day after I get that information, so we're waiting on them. Um, we do have, um, I appreciated everybody, um, and I appreciated Mr. Smith earlier in the work session. Um, I wanted to let you all know that we have had his company do an audit. We also had another company do an audit, and they presented and gave a proposal. The other company's proposal was nowhere near as good, but I wanted to let you know this isn't a situation where we just spoke with one company. Uh, we have had two, uh, they came up with similar findings. Uh, the monetary component is substantially different, and I have that documentation, if any of you would like to see that. And that's the bulk of what I have to present this evening. We have a lot of irons in the fire, there's a lot going on, uh, but these are the, kinda the high points I wanted to hit. But I'd be happy to entertain any questions or try to help out with any information if you have anything.
I appreciated the chance to go along, um, and, and I've sent, at this point, and I apologize to the board members and Mr. Bryant for not sending those pictures earlier, but I have tested you some pictures, um, of, of that shelter. First of all, the work that Mr. Jones and, and Coach Keys have done is cannot be highlighted enough. It, it was remarkable, especially when we were on site, how much they coordinated with this, and this was in Tupelo. How much they had already coordinated with both the school system and the companies that are involved in it. The, the knowledge and the familiarity was really incredible and shows the, the amount of work that they've already done. It's, it's amazing to think what that shelter could mean for our students and for our city. Uh, you know, for non-school times, that is an F, a direct hit, F-five tornado shelter that is available for the residents available, and, and I, I just think it is, the, the good that that can do for our community is just hardly measured, it's so good. So, you know, but lots of work's been done, there are many, many miles to travel before we get to the end of this road. But, but it is, it is really amazing what that will do for our school system and for this city and our community. I, I just, I, I, I could not be more excited about the potential that that has for, for helping public safety and for our school system, so thank y'all for, for getting us on this path. Yeah, I can't help but think, you know, as the mayor of all the meetings, they did some of the advertisement and marketing, and they talk about, you know, where have you ever had a slumber only in Fayetteville City? Where have you ever seen a, uh, shelter in Tennessee that's a basketball gymnasium only in Fayetteville City? I mean, it's pretty gonna be a big deal just for the area. And it follows, as I was telling you during the drive, it's a pretty good drive over there. You know, it follows other investments that the city has made over time, and, and the city and the county have made over time. You know, Project Impact was a thing we did with, uh, down at Stonebridge Park, where we were able to get a FEMA grant through TEMA and do, uh, things that were helping people's lives there, where they were flooded on a regular basis, it was an emergency management nightmare. That's, you know, through federal grant money transformed into a real showcase for our city. Um, the tornado warning siren network that's across, uh, the county and through, through Fayetteville. More examples of how we've done, looked out for public safety, I think it's a long tradition, and I think this is just the next step, uh, in, in looking out for public safety here in, in our community. And I just wanted to commend y'all, I, I think to be the first in this in the state is just almost unbelievable that we're gonna be able, it looks like we're gonna be able to do that, right?
The one we went to is about two thousand.
That's the largest high school in the state of Mississippi, so it's, it's big.
They, they have a, a blue turf football field. It's a big campus, yeah. Yeah, it's exactly right, but we're just proud to be a part of it and excited for the community. Ours is twelve to thirteen hundreds, what we're shooting for, yes.
But again, so you're looking, but that is a version that's gonna look just like it shrunk down, it's exactly what the guy told us it should look like. It's interesting to hear from those. That will be a fun day, it'll be a long day, but when we talk about that, that'll be enjoyable, get to see all that.
Can we ask a question, Mr. Jones? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I have money, I don't know if Mr. Hopkins knows this, but I, I have a check for four thousand dollars in my hand. So, it is actually the UTRUST grant, and I wanted to take an opportunity to brag, bragging on the high schools, some of the people in it. So Mr. Daniel Henderson approached me about wanting to build capacity and do a grant, so he actually did the UTRUST grant. He doesn't even know unless he's watching this, um, that the check is here. We have utilized the UTRUST grants to literally build our music program at the high school, if you're familiar. We now have, uh, three portable recording, um, apparatus in addition to the in-studio ones. This is gonna be utilized to expand, of course, the instruments that are in there. It's very academic, a lot of times I don't think people see the link between, we have had students, and I think Mr. Jones is gonna attest, guess what, this motivated their interest in poetry and English, even though that might not have been something they liked, when they turned it into writing rap music, writing music, composing, um, their own, uh, type of lyrics. It was a great linkage and it created an interest in some students that may not have had that. We're just looking for that one famous person to come back and give us more money. So, that is that, so I want to make you aware of that. Also know that we're on track right now in our FAFSA's, even a COVID year, you know, we have Ms. Pitts, who's our college and career counselor. We're still always, every year, shooting for a hundred percent of the kids that qualify, uh, to fill out the FAFSA so that we can get the Hope scholarships, and right now, we're on track for that, even in a COVID year. Also, wanna brag on another teacher at the high school, if you know Ms. Lauren McIntyre. One of the things that came to light when, uh, we are monitored and that we work on, even in our system improvement plan, our school improvement plan is work-based learning. And so Lauren McIntyre, who was at the middle school doing, um, health science, of course, we're gonna be evolving the high school program to be a first and second year program now, because we had one year of that. This will be that second year Lauren is also doing work-based learning. Um, I mentioned to you before, we have the students who are in the peer mentoring program, they're going back in the schools. All the principals will tell you, um, they're really excited about having them back in that setting, and that's our beginning and going to be our benchmark for our work-based learning. All those kids have done resumes, they've done other things, we actually set up but had to cancel. For every senior in that program, they're gonna do an online interview, um, like a practice job interview. So I'm really appreciative of her doing that. Uh, Ms. Monks, we're actually having a conversation this week, myself, Mr. McCormick, and Ms. Keela Wright with Laura Monks. COVID got the Lincoln Center dual enrollment TCAT courses off track, because those had to go online too, and they had a class that didn't make in industrial maintenance. Coming back and regrouping and feeling optimistic about that in the fall. Our students that are registered are still gonna be able to go to this site in the fall. And we specifically had three students who were interested in industrial maintenance. We also have students who are working nights, and, and you know, that's something I think a lot of people don't realize. And Mr. McCormick, Mr. Jones, and I've talked about, we have students who are attending high school who are working third shift. They're coming to school. They're coming to school, and they're supporting their family, and they're doing those things. So also working out where some of those students, they're going to get a credit for that, the work-based learning. So that's something we're going to be expanding on to be able to do that. Talking to Ms. Monks, in addition to the dual enrollments, also about, you know, as we move through with our CTE classes, our goal has been in cosmetology to do a dual enrollment with the TCAT. So that's still our goal and something we're discussing with Ms. Monks to do. And that is everything I have, unless you guys have a question for me.
That's great.
Great meeting with Bill Byford and Adam McCormick and myself and you. We, you know, they're really going to get help us with some of our, looking at some of our data and some of those type things. I thought that went really well the other day.
And, you know, basically, what kind of drives our school improvement program right now is more EPSOs, early post-secondary opportunities for our students. And of course, we're always working on our ACT, which again, if you don't know, that test is this week, if you want to get really stressed. So, you know, we're still optimistic about that. We talk about, and I'm going to say this, and I feel confident, we talk about in our meetings, all across the country, students have lost ground academically. I mean, that's a given. I feel confident, when you compare us to everybody else, our teachers and our administrators have very much stepped up to the plate, and I think we've held our ground, I mean, across the board, just because of the work that our people have put in. So even though we may have lost some, I think when you compare us, I just feel good about when everybody lands, I think we're going to look like the work we've put in.
A lot of things, a lot of hours to do.
They have, and it has been much appreciated. And I want to thank the city for something. You guys may not realize, I'm making Mr. Bryant nervous when I do that. When you talk about the vans, they are very gracious. One of those vans was their van. And you know, when I started harassing them a few years ago, Mr. Hopkins was surprised when he came here and we actually had a van. But the city, but the city is very gracious in loaning that to us and giving us access to that, because like you said, that was a big benefit to the kids. So we always appreciate the city's support.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Dotson. All right, Ms. T.
Hey, I had a couple of big deadlines today. I actually put in some hours over the weekend, and Ms. Young and Ms. Dotson helped as well. But our district plan was due today, so it was submitted on Sunday afternoon and finished. So we're excited about that. Data, as you know, T and Ready data has not been available, but like Ms. Dotson said, we're super excited about when everything comes out in the wash. I feel like we've worked really hard, and our teachers, our faculty and staff, we're certainly working hard, and we feel good about the things that we've been working on. We tweaked some things, considering all the COVID impacts and things like that, but that district plan is in place. Speaking of that, how that process works, our district plan, and we're pretty lucky with the size of our system, our district plan flows pretty nicely into our school plans as a system. We have a goal that is a three, four reading goal, for example. That flows right into Ralph Askins, and they pick up, and then they add a couple of other goals. But the school plans work a little differently. They'll be due September 1st at the beginning of school, so we're excited to say that we are going to next year partner with Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence, which is a school improvement process, basically. We'll learn more as we go on. The first step in that process is a stakeholder survey for all stakeholders. They compile all of that, they have the survey, they help us send it out, they compile all the data, compile reports. So we are going to actually, I think the plan is, I talked some today with Claudia, didn't get a chance to talk back to Mr. Hopkins, but I think the plan is to put that, push that survey out towards the end of this year, so that principals can have all of that data and school improvement teams can start getting together and looking at that, to add some goals based on that for next year. So school improvement plans are typically due to the district, like September 1st, and then they have to be approved within the district by October 1st. So we're excited about the Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence helping us work through that school improvement process. We're excited about having all three schools become Blue Ribbon Schools, so that we can be a lighthouse district. Is that what that works?
It's going to be heavily marketable for us. It's also a nice thing, though, the CEO also lives in Nashville, so another great local person to help us out, so that's really, really exciting.
We also just completed another big deadline that was today, our ESA IDA results-based monitoring. This year, we had to do a self-assessment. So every year, essentially, you're either onsite monitored, which we did last year, your desktop monitored, where you upload documents, they give you all the feedback, or you do a self-assessment. So this year, we had to do the self-assessment, which is still a pretty lengthy process. That was due today, so that's done and uploaded, and we're awaiting the results of that. I talked about Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence. Ms. Dotson talked about the work-based learning. That's something that I am super excited about for our students with disabilities. Of course, they'll be included in all of those opportunities. But we also have Susan Nix-Kristin, now she's gotten married, but she is also going to do the work-based learning training, just to make sure she's got everything in place to provide and ensure the opportunities for all of her students as well. I want to thank the board and let you know that we're super excited. I know there's been a lot of talk over the years about a CDC facility and making that happen, and I feel like that's finally happening, so I'm super excited about that. And I know Ms. Kristin is as well. We're excited to have those high school students move over to the high school, have an acceptable, workable, usable, effective facility whereby they can have some of those work-based learning opportunities as well. So we're super excited about all of that. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Is she going to make this morning a lot easier than it is tonight?
Yes.
We have a little incident this morning, but you have a high school student that happens to be in the middle school.
Yes. So that's another plan moving forward with Mr. Hopkins, hopefully. We really need to split that facility, or that classroom, which we've talked about in the past. We hired a teacher, she didn't return, we couldn't find an additional teacher. So this year, they are kind of all back together. But I have a couple of prospects. That job has actually been advertised all year. We've had no, and then I guess you probably have news later to share about the other. But we have a couple of super promising prospects that I'm excited about hiring an additional teacher next year, splitting that unit again, so that we can have the middle school students at the middle school and the high school students at the high school, really running a good PACE lab with good work-based learning opportunities within the community and within the school. So we're excited about that.
I hope you all saw the pictures of the Teacher of the Year that we, all of us went around and congratulated the Teachers of Year. We started a new way we want to do that, to recognize those, make it a celebration, not that I've got, you know, in the past, it's been, oh no, I got chosen, I get to pick out paperwork, fill out paperwork. So we'd really want to recognize them as a celebration. And I can honestly say it was a great afternoon. I hope Mr. Hopkins can. I saw some of the pictures were on Annette Wilkerson's face when she walked in the gym with her, she thought her kids were in trouble, and so. Mr. Adams just kept saying, it's not my birthday, it's not my birthday. So that was a great way to start our February. We have started pre-K registration. We're up significantly number-wise from last year, about four times what we had at this point last year. So to me, that's encouraging. We will have kindergarten registration next week. I think it's Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We are using my office for that, to keep it away from the front office, and we can spread out in there. So we are using that in my office, and we're bringing the teachers in. We got some real positive feedback about them meeting the teachers, so we are doing that. The, I guess the big thing for me this month is with the special session of the legislature, they came up with a lot of things they want schools to do, and of course, a lot of that has to do with summer camps for our, a summer learning camp for our students that are currently in K4, and a bridge camp for the students that are in fifth through seventh right now. So, we are in the process of making plans for all of that. We will be requesting a waiver for the summer, summer learning camp, which was supposed to be the K4 students. The original plan was for that to be six weeks. That's just a big commitment for teachers to work the entire summer and then come right back to teach in the fall. So we are going to be requesting a waiver, as many districts around us are, to a four-week camp versus a six-week camp. Talked to supervisors in probably six of the surrounding counties, and all but one is requesting that waiver. So we will be submitting that waiver to, but we will have the summer camps at Ralph Askins and Fayetteville Middle School this summer.
Yeah, the waiver will be for four weeks, but also for four days a week. Minimum is 24 hours a week, so we won't have it on Fridays. We feel that's a little better for families as they take trips and those things, is you know, we want some consistency with the students there.
We will be providing transportation to get the students there, because we know that that is a huge obstacle for a lot of our students. So Mr. Jones and I were talking today about how many buses we would need to have this summer.
Even students outside the city?
Oh, we cannot, we, are our students.
Outside the city.
Yeah, every district in the state is going to be required to do this, so we will, we will be serving, the goal is for us to serve 139 students at Ralph Askins and 93 at Fayetteville Middle School, which is going to be an undertaking in itself. So we will be.
A certain percentage of those have to be economically disadvantaged. We have to have 41%. Actually, we don't feel that would be an issue, but I mean, that's, of that 139, that 41% have to be, and in order for us to receive full funding. I will say, we are going to put a method in that if something happens, that we don't get full funding, based on some of these things that we don't meet with our SRA 3.0, we're going to use some of that money just as a backup plan. But what we don't want to do is have to get bits of general fund, because all of a sudden, they don't reimburse us at what we thought we were going to get. We hope we get full, but there's always those issues that could get concerned.
Also, if we have, for example, students that have IAPs, even though we may not be required to start in the summer, we want to set them up for success. We want to give them the best opportunities.
We want to ensure access to the program.
So we're going to add another layer to, that we can take out of our SRA loans. It's not necessary the state's doing that.
Right.
Are they, you say, are they given schools a set curriculum to follow with these students in the summer? What are you supposed to just continue with your intervention plan?
It will be two hours of reading, two hours of math, an hour of intervention, and an hour of physical activity. No, we have not been given a curriculum, but we are, I'm talking to people around us, seeing what everybody's using, so that, but we will use our intervention materials that are research-based. And, you know, we want it to be fun. Kids learn when it's fun, and we want it to be fun and interesting, because we want them to come for all four weeks. And if they come, if they come and we're not having fun, they're not going to come back. So we will be working on curriculum. Right now, just trying to get the logistics in place, and then we'll start working on curriculum as soon as we get.
They're pretty rigid about the requirements of what must be met hourly, so we will have to fulfill that.
And meals, we have to provide lunch and breakfast, or lunch and a snack. Talked to Megan about that today, and so working on all the logistics, so that I can then turn it over to the principals to let them decide what curriculum they're going to use and what the day is going to look like, but.
How many students do we serve in the ready-to-be-ready?
Sixty.
Almost doubling what we were doing ready-to-be-ready.
Yeah, double. We had sixty most days.
We did do a survey, and we have found that we were concerned, because a lot of systems surrounding us, that we would not have enough teachers willing to participate. We do, based on the number. So the next survey will be, you know, how many students do we feel like will have to participate? You know, it's, we can't make them, so that's going to be a little bit of an issue.
We are required to have a 30-day registration window, so we are pulling together the students that meet the criteria right now, and we will open that up hopefully by, my goal is the week we come back from spring break, and that way, we have some time to recruit more, because we want to keep our full funding. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Tell Mayor Wizzenant we've got a seat in here, if he wants to come in here and sit at, you've got to sit that seat in here, if you'd like to come on in.
All right, City Board, Ms. Williams, I think we have a budget amendment.
Yes, we do, it's budget number four, and this is moving monies within the general fund budget to cover a contract service of $26,500. And the contract is with Boncor Agreement, which is an agreement for athletic training and physical therapy services. And this agreement was signed in 2021, but in comparing the budget, I believe it's an oversight for this contract, and so I'm just asking for, the board's approval to move limits from the lineups to cover this.
And we're thankful they do what they do.
Yes, we are.
I'm sure we are.
How much motion approved?
I think we got a motion to approve. Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor? All votes? All right?
And so the procedure now is that we will send that to the city and.
And just continuing with my training and, it's a busy time with budgets and different budgets that we're preparing, Ms. Young said you have the new summer program that we've got a lot of things going on, and they've been paying interest contracts, it's just a lot of things going on.
And you don't know how much money you're going to get from your staff.
Exactly.
So, a lot of fun times, very good, thank you. All right, we'll move on to reports, immediate facilities, transportation. I don't know if you've talked to anybody.
Nothing to add, the one thing that I would, okay, so I do have one thing. So you know, when you talk about working with FEMA, and you talk about working with FEMA and whatnot, you worry with all these layers of government, how easy is this going to be? The report from the school in Tupelo was that FEMA was absolutely a breeze to deal with. Every problem they had was with the Mississippi EMA. And in terms of delays and, you know, having to go back and negotiate this way, or FEMA, they said, was just a dream to work with. And I think we're in a unique situation, given that this is the first one. FEMA in Tennessee, FEMA is, from what we understand, with the representatives, you all have been in communication, but they are just over the top excited to get one of these shelters in Tennessee, use it as a showcase, to then try to get other school systems across the state to do the same thing. So our anticipation is that FEMA should be pretty straightforward for us, as well. So time will tell, but I feel like that's an important element of what our staff's going to have to deal with, and it looks very urgent.
All right. What do you have, you guys?
I would just agree with that. I'd say the only, there won't be roadblocks at all with FEMA, I don't anticipate. The fact that it's new to them would be the only thing that'll slow it at any point, but they have every motivation to walk, to support us and have it every step, so we're excited about that.
We're definitely excited. All righty, we'll move on to finance, and I, we have one item, and that's the approval of, Mr. Hopkins, use our fiscal agent for the system, whatever, to file the necessary amendments and fund transfers for federal projects for the 2021 year. Also, there's a lot of things that happen through the year, also going into the year, whenever the budget is immediately, whatever, we've done this every year, so I made a motion to get Mr. Hopkins to approve this fiscal agent, school system, to do what's necessary with federal projects. Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All votes? All right. All right, we'll move on to insurance policy, and that makes people a bit busy. So.
I think everybody has a little packet of policies and their phones. Okay, so on February the 11th. Okay, so on February the 11th, myself, Bridget, Ms. Dotson, and Ms. Tooton, we met, and we went over policies from January and February that we needed to review, and that's about three sheets of papers of the policies that we went over. These are policies that we already have, we reviewed, there's just no revisions. We just need to approve these policies if we want to keep them on manual going forward.
With no revisions?
Yes, with no revisions.
You turn that into a motion?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion to approve the policy that's been reviewed, for no revisions. Do I have a second? All those in favor? All opposed? All right, you approve those. Ain't no review, that's good.
And we also have three new policies that we'd like to introduce. It's the school district goals, the special education students, and the physical examination and vaccination policies. These are three new policies we didn't have, but they're recommended by the TSBA. And we need to do a first reading on them, see if there's any changes or any additions, additions or anything that you guys need to make.
Yeah, we can take a look at it between now and.
You should have it now and then, yes.
And I think we can do all these together, or we got to do them separately? I got to do them separately? If you want to make a motion, we'll do them separately.
I'll make a motion, but we do it first, we're going to be separate.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve 1.700 school district goals. Do I have a second? I have a motion to say, this is on first reading, everybody. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, all righty. Then we have a motion to approve 6.500 special education students on first reading. Do I have a second? Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then the third one is 6.402, which is physical examination and vaccinations, for first reading. I have a motion to approve that, do I have a second?
Yes.
Have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Ms. Bryant.
Okay, and our last one is a policy that we already have. We just made revision to it, the wording has been updated. It is 5.1 personnel goals, and this is a first reading as well. So I'll please, I'm sorry, I made a motion, still you a first reading.
I have a motion to approve 5.100 personnel goals, revised policy where I have. Do I have a second? Have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, all right, very good. And all, remember, all of them on first reading, so we'll be revising this next one and approving second reading. So we're not making a look to. And I thank you all for your hard work, so I know, well, this will be a continual thing. But give the little feel of.
Yeah.
Little feel where you like it at.
You put through a lot of stuff. But Ms. Dotson comes on fast.
Ms. Dotson's a very big help to TSBA, and we can be helped too, so. Thank you all. Is that it?
Our meeting is March 11th.
We got some more coming, then.
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much. Okay, Dr. School?
All right, we have a request for a band field trip to Universal Studios for Federal High School. You know, I would like to see that approved, you know, I recommend that.
Got a motion? Have a second? Any questions? Very good. They've been on this one for a while, so.
They have, and they've had a tough year for bands, too. It's been, this is an exciting time for them, I, they've done a lot of stuff.
And hopefully, they get to go. The world changes, so we have a motion to say, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, all righty. Next item?
The approval of the sick leave bank of trustees, and I think y'all have that information before. We have, Ms. Lisa Williams is appointed as the trustee, and then the board appointee. You can choose, but I asked Mr. Tommy Holland, who has previously done that, if he would be willing to continue to do that.
So we'll only take five.
Like a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve our trustees?
Aye.
Have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, all right. Very good.
And then I'm not sure, I'm going to listen there just in case. Certified, if they're tenured and they're non-certified employees, do we have to vote on that? To accept their. Tenured certified employees? Then that's it, then they just missed, Pat Dean's going to retire, so. We are working with her and plans for replacement, give someone, and as a matter of fact, we're waiting until tonight. We'll post that job tomorrow, and then we'll get ready to start the interview process. And Ms. Lisa Williams will help with that.
She has a kid at the end of the school year.
Yes, it's a baby. That's been great, and I mean.
Absolutely has, and I tell you, you know, as we all know, in every organization, there's people who behind the scenes making the engine run. Pat Dean has absolutely been a pillar, as I think about the financial situation of the school system over, especially recent years, starting high school and all that, it's, that's been quite a job, so we really over-allow that.
It's up to you when you check the resignation notes, but.
I talked to her a few, three times. But I'll tell you what, I'll do whatever Pat says. Pat was a good, she says, "I'm leaving," okay? She could tell me I was leaving, okay? I did want you all to notice the art out here, that there is, there's four pieces. The high school just turned theirs in, I think, before the meeting, so we didn't put it out there. But that is student art from a, that they selected from the schools. It is absolutely gorgeous, and just please make note of that, we're going to have, you know, six pieces at all times if there are students out there. I'm really proud of it. And then the concession stand, you may have heard, we're going to start taking the concession. And there was some confusion about what it was, but how it was, I guess, done, but as Mr. Jones here witnessed, we were asked if we would be willing to take that over, and so we accepted. And no, this is for, nothing done. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I'm going, all that, you don't need it.
We'll move on. I've got one item, and I know it's been sent out, it's the doctor resolution for the Special Teachers Appreciation Day, which is on March 4th, and I'm sure it's a good thing they're going to be having on March 4th. And I just meant, every teacher, special, you know, like we're doing in any, for special, every teacher special. But these are, this is what we call special teachers, art teachers, music teachers, D.E.E. teachers, technology teachers, special ed teachers, speech teachers, school counselors, and librarians. So that's, that's under this umbrella, and I make a motion to approve the resolution to appreciate them. Have a second?
Aye.
Have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And we do appreciate all our teachers, and this will be a special day for those special teachers. And I think that's, and I know we've got a board meeting scheduled for the 5th, and then we're going to have a board session on keys and seats starting on the left. So we got a lot of, a lot of things coming up, a lot of things going on, and. So anybody else got anything? All right, we'll, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.